Mr. Barry runs off again, but you know, hey. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission. Desiree, can we have roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Schuster?
Present.
Commissioner Chavez?
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Present.
Could y'all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. An advance notice of a potential quorum was posted to alert the public that a quorum of the Raton Water Board and RPS Board of Directors may attend this meeting tonight. I see a few of you out there, so welcome. It's for the purpose of approving the fiscal 21 audit reports. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, 6:00 p.m. here in the chambers, and all city offices will be closed on Friday, April 15th, in observance of Good Friday. At this time, I would like, I would entertain a motion. I would like to move items five and six down below item seven B. This is so that we can have our auditors present the audit first since they are on Zoom and waiting to talk to us. Instead of them having to guess what time to go on, I'd just like to have them go first.
Make a motion to move.
A second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
The city manager had a little discussion.
Oh, did he?
There's a question. You do have item C, you have item C as well, which would be a resolution to accept and approve the FY 21 audit. If you want that one as well.
I'll amend the motion to move it down below item C.
Agreed.
Alrighty. All in favor, vote by the sound of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Scott, for catching that. Alrighty, Mr. Barry.
Mayor Commission, we do have representatives from Carr, Riggs, and Ingram LLC available to get into the most recent financial report, the annual audit. So the annual audit has been completed, submitted to the state auditor. The state auditor has completed their review, and they have released it so that we can talk about it in public and make it available for public review. They are standing by. I would comment that under the audit, it encompasses all parts of the city, including Raton Water Works. And Raton Public Service Company is considered a component entity in the audit world, so that is a separate report, and they will be covering both of those. We will have then consideration of the resolution that we just discussed, but the audit reports will be made available to the public at that point. So I will turn it over to Michael Ann at this point. And Michael Ann, if you could introduce the reporting team. We will do it on Zoom. It will be broadcast here. Sorry, that's uncomfortable for some of you. We're working on that.
AJ, are you with us? AJ, I think you're muted.
He is.
You do see that we do have AJ Bowers representing Carr, Riggs, and Ingram to give the report. And then Kathy McQuary is on Zoom as well. She is the president of Raton Public Service Company Board.
AJ, can you hear us? I'm showing you as muted. Could you unmute and let us know that you're there?
Are we the host? Because we should be able to unmute before the host.
I, no, I'm not the host.
Okay.
Got cell phone number for him?
You ready for me to start?
Yes, AJ, we've rearranged the agenda slightly so that you can go first.
I can't hear anything.
AJ, can you hear me?
Mayor, I would comment that we do have Aldis Fields, president of Raton Water Works, here also. Robin Osborne and David are here representing Raton Public Service Company. Well, I think that's all of the representatives that we have from the utilities. David Swanson.
I guess we're just bologna.
You can see we'll go ahead and start. You can see that in the chat, so. Thank you guys for having us today. My name's AJ Bowers. We're part of the following team. We'll go ahead and run through the, right, the, the, the. And so, if you can see my screen. What we covered today is going to be real quick over the timeline of the reports. Let's find interesting highlights and then projections of the kind of finalized, finalized audit here. So we kind of talked about the timeline itself. To my projects, this started only back in July, and we, you know, issued here in December to the state auditor's office. They do their review and release as well. We'll move to release March 6th, and then March 21st was actually the release for RPS. This is the audio is not too good.
That's better.
That's better. Okay, so hopefully that's better. Okay, so the audit was just released here in this last couple of weeks. And that's what we're here doing today is the presentation to the commission so that you, you know, have that presented to you. So it is finalized, it's been public information. Briefly, a couple of things that are in the financial statements from us is the independent auditor's report. That's in the front of the financial statements, fairly presented in accordance with GAAP, and there's no areas where an opinion could not be rendered. So nothing that we didn't anticipate, that's the best opinion that you can get. It means that the financial statements are reasonable to the users of the financials. There's two other reports in the financial statements themselves towards the back. One of them is going to be the Yellow Book Report or the Government Audit Standards Report on Internal Control. And that is a negative assurance report. So what that means is that we don't test controls, but we understand controls. We'll walk through the controls in order to be able to design our audit procedures. And anything that we find, we'll report to you. So there was no findings for RPS. There was one other matter that's reportable in the state of Mexico at the city level. That's in the back of the financials. We covered it in detail at the exit conference. So go back to that and look at it if you want to, but I think a really, really clean audit itself. And then the last report is uniform audits report on each major federal program. And so for the city, there was the coronavirus relief fund, the COVID-19 funds. We did audit those, those funds. We have to audit the controls, the compliance of those controls, and render an opinion on that program and the compliance. And it was an unmodified opinion, which means that the city complied on material respects with the direct internal compliance requirements. And there was nothing to note, no findings to note, material weaknesses, deficiencies, or anything like that. So briefly, very clean audit, really a good job. So we appreciate that and really a good, good job to the entire team up there. Our responsibility as the auditor, yes, we prepare the financial statements as they are, as a service, but they are yours, and our job is to formally express an opinion on the financial statements. And we obtain a reasonable, it's not an absolute assurance, the financial statements are free from material misstatements. We don't look at every transaction. We don't look at every, every check or anything like that, but we look at things on a sample basis. And we do consider those internal controls of the, that I mentioned before for the purpose of designing audit procedures and communicate all significant matters related to the financial statements to you. So you got communication at the beginning, then entrance conference, exit conference. Here's the board presentation of the financial statements, how all the findings are there, etc. So all of the communications have been done. Then your responsibility is going to be to have and establish and maintain internal controls, including those ongoing monitoring activities, accounting principles, the fair presentation of the financial statements. You're going to have programs that you designed to, and controls to prevent the tech fraud, and that you have participated in all areas that related to the audit itself. So that's management's responsibility. Just as a real quick kind of run through of the numbers. I've got RPS in here at the very beginning. And so also we're going to just kind of have some trend lines here as it relates to the five-year trends of the assets liabilities and net positions. So there's, you know, 1.99 in decreasing cash, that's kind of some spending in the year. You'll see that, the liabilities, it's really going to be related to your net OPEB and then your pension liability and net position is kind of your equity line. So as you look here, I told you told last night, RPS 15.3. And potentially with that, which I'll go back to, it will be a lot of these cash investments. So when you look at your liability line, they're pretty consistent, okay? From seven to seven, you know, 7.1 to $7 million over the last five years. And then the middle line is the debt. So as you can see, as you paid that down year over year, you know, 3.7 million in the net pension and OPEB liability. And that's the portion that's really related to the, you know, the parent of the RHC at the state level. It's a proportionate share. And then your equity is about 8.6 on a net position. And really, that unrestricted portion, so that's not restricted, it's not a fixed assets. It's pretty flat. It's about $100,000 of a negative. That's where that portion of your pension expense drops into, so you see that. These data activities, that's the revenues and expense line, really has been extremely consistent over the last five years. The only thing that you'll really see is that expense side where you have the one-time settlement payment. And so you'll see that jump up from that two, that 6.2 to 8.5. But that revenue line has been 6.3 to 6.3 over the five years, right? With a slight uptick there in 2019. And expenses have been right in line except for that payment that had to be made. So nothing out of the ordinary. When you look at the city itself, how, you know, the city's balance sheet, the capital assets, you're going to make up for the majority of the trend, and your liability is going to be heavily influenced by that net pension, OPEB liabilities itself. So you can look at assets in the city, it's 63.7, 49 and a half, and that is what is related to the fixed assets. And then cash invests about 10.7. So when you look at your overall liability side, it's about $22 million per total liabilities. Seven of that is debt, that's that lower line. And then that middle line there, that yellow is that net pension liability, the OPEB. And again, that comes from your proportionate share of the overall state liability of that unfunded portion. So that's what sits on the books. And then you see this, you know, and then it'll kind of be reflected in that equity position. You've got about 43 million in the net position, and then the unrestricted side is negative five. So the reason I bring that up is that way you understand what, when bond companies are looking at things, that, that's related to that pension piece, that kind of offsets there. And the income statement itself, obviously, had an increase in 2021, really related to the operating rates. With the capital grants, some related assets, the coronavirus relief fund, and then there was an increase. And the expenses have been partially because of the spending on those business funds, as well as due to the, excuse me, the pension, the OPEB expenses. So to your total revenues at the citywide level, 13 and a half, and the expenses were 13.4. So learning a surplus there, which is always positive, and I think, you know, exercising some good fiscal responsibility. And then lastly, we just want to say thanks, you know, use us as a resource as needed. And like, when we reach out, as needed, we do offer Gatsby trainings and guidance free of charge as part of our, you know, commitment to you guys. And so anytime we have ones, we do about maybe one a quarter. And a couple of times a year, we'll do something potentially, and we send those out here on the mailing list. So go ahead and, you know, sign up for those if you guys are interested in that. If there's ever any questions, please let us know. At least, you know, leases or anything else that's coming up. Leases is being implemented this year, so if you've got questions, reach out. And then the IT is just be, always be aware that IT is a really important thing. And there's a lot of, I'm trying to adjust my audio settings as it's looking. So the IT environment itself, if there's ever any questions, let us know. As it relates to that changing IT landscape, always keep, you know, abreast of that cybersecurity. And lastly, I just want to say thanks to everyone and working with the team. We've worked with you guys for about eight years now, so I think this is the end of our rotation period. I'll verify, but I believe that's where we are. The state audit will actually came out today, so you guys are, I guess, at that point. So I thank you guys, and I will pause for questions, but I don't know if anyone's going to be able to get them in. So let me know if you have any.
Alrighty, any questions for the auditors for regular? I understand it's a very good report.
I hear something there.
Can you hear us now, AJ? Maybe he can hear these.
Ellen, this is Kathy.
Yes.
This is Kathy McQuary with RPS. We want to thank you very much and your firm for, for helping us and working with us the last eight years and appreciate everything that you've done, you know, answering questions and working through different issues with us. So we appreciate the work that your firm has done.
Oh, we appreciate it very much. We've enjoyed working with you guys over the last eight years, so thank you, Kathy.
Alrighty, any other questions, comments? Mr. Barry?
Mayor Commission, I would just state that.
If there's nothing else, I thank you guys for your time, and I'll see you or talk to you someone. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we do want to make the full report available to the public. Michael Ann, is that something we normally would have on the website? Or what's the best way to make that available?
We could certainly put a link on the website. It is on the state auditor's website. So you'll find the city's report, and then the RPS report is a separate financial report. And I did check, they're both on there as of today.
I think the other thing is, you know, audit is essentially a year-round activity. Upon notification from the state auditor, we will issue a request for proposal for professional services. There is a limited timeframe on using the same auditor. So we, as I understand, we cannot use Carr, Riggs, and Ingram again. We will issue an RFP for an auditor that will be new to us. They will be somebody that's approved by the state auditor, and we'll start on the next year's audit as well.
Alrighty, any other comments, questions about the audit? Dave, anything? Kathy, anything?
Oh, I've already.
Oh, you already got rid of her? Sorry. Al, anything as far as the water? Alrighty. Okay, we'll move on to item C, then deliberate and act on resolution 2022-13, acceptance and approval of the FY 21 audits. Have a copy of that. Resolution, we have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem. We have a second from Commissioner Chatterley. Is there any discussion? Do we have a roll call vote, please, Desiree?
Sure. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Item passes, thank you. Alright, let's see if we can get back into some kind of order here. Going to move up to item five, committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley.
Short and sweet. I attended the New Mexico Municipal League District Meeting on March 10th for the legislative recap. It was very informative and interesting. They had some great guest speakers. It was the best one I had attended since I started with the league. I really enjoyed it. And all that information and their breakdown of all the legislation that impacts cities is on their website. And that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Jacomo.
Arthur Johnson Memorial Library, the board met on March 15th, 2022, at 5:30 p.m. Our very director, Tyler Gray, reported to the board that on Wednesday, February 2nd, the lead customer, students of New Mexico, delivered and installed nine new Patriot computers. This project has been in process since November 2021, but was delayed due to supply chain issues. The system, full report for month of January, donations collected $9,712.87. Majority of this was from grants. Funds collected $86.73. Copies made, $385.05. Memorials received, $45. Story hours held in library was five, attended by 29 persons. Programs held was one, attended by three persons. The system's bill report for month of Fe- February 2022, donations collected were $17,847.89. Majority of this money was from grants. Funds collected $57.55. Copies made was $441.10. Memorals received was $50. Story hours held was six, attended by 25 persons. Programs held was one, attended by three persons. Regular meeting of the Raton Public Service Company was held on Wednesday, February 23rd, 2020, 7:00 p.m. Robin Osborne, RPS manager, office manager, sat fifty for review with an approved by the board financial physical information. After a lengthy review and approval of CSE, CSE stands for cooperative educational services participating, and also cooperative purchase agreement for the state agencies and for local bodies such as RPS, human resources, and solutions. RPS general manager, David Sim, reported that he, on unit four, running times comparison with previous months. Dave reported that purchase power costs have been averaging 40.553 for the last six months period. This includes invoices from the Tri-State, Pasco, Wofen, and Metro, Metro Natural Gas. He stated that with the current trend, hands where he is hopeful that RPS will soon be able to pay off the city loan as well as RPS repayment loan soon and as we expected. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Chavez?
I do, Mayor Pro Tem Schuster and myself attended the Raton Water Board meeting on March 15th. Currently, Lake Maloya continues to rise. It's currently one foot below the spillway. We discussed the second Lake Dorothy Lee's management. Well, the meeting will be on March 23rd, which is tomorrow. Discussed receiving acceptable proposal for the Maloya Crest Sealing Project. The city water department repaired a gas leak at the wastewater unit, the nutrient removal update. They back flushed the large pipe at the filter plant. And we received a clear audit from the New Mexico Finance Authority and heard and approved financial report for February of 2022. Do you have anything to add?
Nope, you got my notes.
Also attended the city Raton Financial Advisory Committee Thursday, March 17th, and heard and approved the February financial reports to be presented to the city commission tonight. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
So on March 16th, I also attended the Rogers Tax Advisory Board and listened to their, will be listening to their recommendations a little later. I thought, one little highlight I will point out regarding the Dawson reunion, September 3rd and 4th, is that they are having some special guests. Dolores Porta, who is 91 years old, will be there to talk about what it was like to grow up in Dawson. So I thought that, that's kind of a nice thing that we're going to be doing. Yeah, but, and we'll talk more about the other things, but.
Alrighty, that's yours?
That's it.
Okay. It's for myself, along with Commissioner Chatterley, attended the New Mexico Municipal League Board meeting on the 10th. And as she stated, it was very informative and one of the better meetings we've had in a while. Starting to get back into the swing of things. Last week, I attended the National League of Cities Congressional Cities Conference in Washington, DC. Was very informative. We had a special surprise guest speaker on Monday. President Biden showed up and addressed the crowd, some takeaways from the speech. For, of course, it's about the one-year anniversary of ARPA. This helped communities like Raton get back, bounce back because mainly the funding went straight to the communities. It didn't go to the state, where we had to wait for them to decide how to use it. But the money came back to us. He was very happy with the way that had turned out. Then to talk about the infrastructure bill. He is not saying this is going to be a year of rebuilding. It's going to be a decade for rebuilding our infrastructure in the country and in communities. There's a dashboard available. It's called the Infrastructure Insights Dashboard. It's available for communities to access, to see what's on there that, that fit our needs and tools that we can use to access this stuff. There's also the big guidebook, but it's almost 1,100 pages. And if you don't have high-speed internet, you're going to be downloading for a while. The other thing you talked about was workforce training. We still need workforce, workforce in our country, in our communities. We're seeing that here in Raton. With the infrastructure project coming up, we need to get a trained workforce. Stated that the ARPA funds could be used to invest in workforce and create new pathways to better jobs through union-based apprenticeships and on-the-job training tools. So that, it was a well-received speech. We had one heckler, you know, made one comment, that was it, then it was done. So it was pretty good. Then we, as a group, met with Senators Lujan and Heinrich, as well as Representatives Harrell and Ledger Fernandez. We stressed the need for affordable broadband in New Mexico and the tools to get it implemented. As they then pointed out in this infrastructure bill, there is $65 billion strictly for, for broadband. I believe it was Congresswoman Ledger Fernandez's staff, Chief of Staff, stated that he felt within three years, that would not be a problem any longer in New Mexico. So that seemed like a pretty aggressive ask, so we'll see what happens. But the money is there. Again, they have staff available to help us weave our way through the grants that are available and seem willing to help. Like I said, all of our staff stated they were available to give aid and guidance and were to apply for these grants. And, and then we stressed with all of them going forward that any federal funding coming out should be funneled directly to the communities as the ARPA grants, as the ARPA monies were. We use the example, there, there is infrastructure money setting in Santa Fe right now that has not moved. It's still setting there, and the administration in Santa Fe has not done anything with it. We had a meeting, it's going on a month now with former Mayor Chavez? Is that, it's about that long? And still not seeing anything. So we stressed in the future, let's see if we can funnel that money straight to the communities. Upon returning last Friday, city manager Barry and myself met with Jennifer Sanchez. She's in the New Mexico Office for Representative Ledger Fernandez. We discussed current projects, putting in an emphasis on the film school. And we also discussed Sugar Creek Canyon State Park. And Congresswoman is looking to come to Raton in mid to late April. So we're eagerly anticipating that visit to push our projects and see what we can go do. This Thursday evening and Friday, I will be in Santa Fe with the New Mexico Self Insurers Fund. It's a board meeting that we are going to, this first meeting we've had in person. And we're going to discuss a lot of the pending cases that are out there and see what kind of conclusions we can come to that. And then, of course, we have an RPS meeting tomorrow night. And that is all I have.
I actually forgot about one.
Okay. Go ahead.
Secretary Korkinsky?
Yes.
Yes, was here, and I don't have it written down. What day was that? The city manager, Mr. Barry and I were at this meeting. It was a little different than we thought it was going to be, but she is related to the early childhood programs, early start programs that they're putting together. And so the, Christie Medina was also at the meeting and.
Several school board members.
Several school board members.
Communication with school board.
Yeah. So it was a good meeting, and actually, I don't remember the gentleman's name. He was here from our new state legislature.
Yeah, we did have the Chief of Staff for Representative Montoya. Yeah, we did have the Chief of Staff for Representative Montoya was in Rattone as well and not with us on that. So we had met him with Representative earlier.
And I think they were basically just trying to find out what we needed and what, you know, making contact, handing out cards and letting us know they're there.
They like to hand out cards.
They do.
All righty. Anything else anybody forgets? All right, let's move on. Item six, items from citizens present. At this time, we'll take comments from citizens present. However, I ask if you are speaking about something that is related to an item in the business part of the meeting, please wait till that item comes up on the agenda. So do we have anyone wishing to address the commission at this time? Ms. Fernandez, please state your name and your business.
I have handouts.
All right.
My done. Well, it has a name on it.
Oh, okay.
So. But yeah, go ahead and just pass those on down. Oh, wait, I have one from Maria. All right.
I'm Leslie Fernandez, and I'm here tonight for the Rattone Pickleball Club. We have several members in the audience waiting, and we've been very interested in the audit. But now we'll put you guys to sleep. Stephen Dedre Downing and Jeff Zappos are here. Stephanie Jansen and JP Duran, and I think JP is going to speak a little bit. And Barb Bonahum and I are representing the probably sixty people who have come and played pickleball with us since late July of two thousand and twenty-one. Pickleball, as you'll see from the letters that we've garnered from our group, is kind of a combination between ping pong, badminton, and, well, I don't know, and tennis. Yeah, lots of tennis players have joined us and played. I was going to bring a visual aid of the paddle and ball, but I forgot it in my car. So, and I also had a really nice video to show you, but my Mac is not compatible with your equipment. So you guys miss out on that. So I'll just tell you that it is probably the most fun and contagious game that you'll ever be associated with. We've had ages from age seven to eighty-seven that have played with us. And that's just here in Rattone. You'll see from the article that I attached from September of two thousand and twenty-one about Santa Fe and their building or refurbishing tennis courts in Santa Fe at Fort Marcy Park, that it's the fastest-growing sport in America. It's estimated at three million people now. And it is not just for old people, although that's kind of who's started it and who is pushing for facilities to allow both physical and mental exercise. Trinidad has an active group, not even as big as ours, but they have lots of players that actually are coming here to Rattone to play with us quite often. And some of our members are going over there. Angel Fire has adapted several tennis courts there to pickleball. Canyon City has an amazing facility. And of course, Colorado, it's hard to compare because their lottery money goes to recreation. So their facilities are often way beyond ours, but it's interesting to see what they've done. And Pueblo has just now started. They've selected a site, and they're going to do new build instead of refurbishing tennis courts. So the problem and why we're coming to you tonight to highlight this is that here in Rattone, we have a huge active group, but our playing areas, we're afraid, are going to narrow. And I'll explain that by saying, I started this back in July when two friends from Seattle came, and they play daily in Seattle. And they said, well, let's go play. I'd played a couple times before, and they said, let's go play. We just need to go to the tennis courts. So I got some duct tape or something, and I slapped down some tape with the dimensions. It's about half as big, a little smaller than half the size of a tennis court. And so we slapped that on, and we played. Got a friend of mine from here, and really, we were hooked. And they made me believe, based on their experience in Seattle, that we could do it here in Rattone. So I called a couple friends that I thought might be interested, and they had never heard of it either. But they came out, and we actually taped the high school tennis courts without permission. And we started playing there in late July and August. And we just started growing. And it just was amazing, the number of people that came out. And we saw quickly, when we tried to re-tape one of the courts, that our tape was going to leave a residue on the high school tennis courts that probably was not going to be appreciated if the high school had a tennis team this spring. Well, that's come to fruition. And so we're going to have to wait until after tennis season now to reassess with the schools to see what we can do to share those four tennis courts and make them outdoor pickleball courts. Our opinion is that the tennis players, the number of tennis players has tanked, basically. And you know that all the other tennis courts here in town have been ripped up in the parks, et cetera. And we also believe that the number of pickleball players will continue to grow as people see this and as we spread the word, as we're trying to do tonight. So when the weather set in, we had a dilemma because we couldn't play outside. So we called City Manager Barry, and along with Desiree, we came to what has been an amazing agreement with the city to play at the convention center inside. And as long as there's not another event that has booked the convention center, we have been playing there since probably November, I think. And we started taking roll about then so that we could show you all our numbers, and that's included in your packet. But we, I mean, it's just been amazing. We probably have seventy to eighty people a week that use the convention center. We have three courts taped off in there, which is interesting because the Trinidad Rec Center is used in Trinidad, and they only have two courts. We have been, it's played with doubles. So you have four people playing on any given court at any time. We've had numerous times where we've had more people than we can fit on those three courts. It's just been, it's just been unbelievably wonderful. Desiree keeps me notified of when we have blackout days, which is all week this week. And we almost had a pickleball rebellion. Because, yeah, it was, it was, we were not happy about that. And my colleagues here and pickleball colleagues wanted me to press harder, press harder, get them to, you know, let us go at four o'clock in the morning or something. And I said, we probably all could use the spring break, the five days, to let our bodies rest. And that hasn't gone over well with the membership. But we really work well, and we thank Desiree for understanding what we do. We play about, from about eight-thirty in the morning to eleven-thirty in the morning or longer if there's more people. And we would really invite you all to come and watch. I think Commissioner Chavez commented once to me that he saw a bunch of nuts out at the high school tennis courts doing something, chasing balls around. And I said, that would be, that would be us. But really, to come watch it, I think you'll see that it's an amazing thing as a social gathering, as a physical activity. And we really appreciate the cities helping us out on this because we wouldn't have had anywhere to play in the winter. So, but given that and given our growth, we also know that we want dedicated courts. If we can't share with the high school tennis courts, we at some point really need dedicated pickleball courts. And that's what our plea is, at least to get you all started to think about, about that. We want to be ahead of our sister city over the hill instead of following their lead. We'd like to be the ones that get these first. You'll see in the packet, there's actually a letter from one of our players from Trinidad. We have five or six that come pretty regularly, once or twice a week. And, you know, they admit, they spend money here, they eat afterwards, they go to the restaurants, that they'll join our tournaments once we get those started, and we're able to do that. And so we just really want to be ahead of the game. It's costly, and we make no bones about that. And we figure it's going to be a mosaic of different parts to put this together. But we hope that the city will find a way to help in that journey. Redoing tennis courts is a whole lot cheaper than new build. We presented to the El Portel Group because we wanted to be considered for that block. And that went over like a lead balloon. And so everybody said, nope, nope, we don't want pickleball there. It should be over at the Aquatic Center, the sports complex at the Aquatic Center. We don't care where it is. We really don't care where it is. But we thought that that was already flat. It was, you know, a good place. There's just a lot of considerations. Bathrooms are kind of important, but if it were at the Aquatic Center, at least for some hours, we would have access to that. So I think JP Duran is going to speak a little bit briefly because we don't have all the numbers, but at least briefly to what we would be looking at. I've looked, and there are a couple grant possibilities, but they'll only give to municipalities. So I hope to work with the city. I'll do all the work on the grants, but it would have to come signed off on by the city. There is a huge one from the group that was here with the Fisher's Peak thing, Lexi, Lexus, the New Mexico Outdoor Recreation Division, seven million dollars. But pickleball does not fit into their little pebbly hole. But we're going to try anyway and wait until they tell us no. So, and they do a two-to-one match with the city funds. So they mentioned disc golf in their little paragraph, but then when I got deeper, it didn't look like pickleball was a part of it. But, you know, we're going to be undeterred. We're going to keep trying. So we're hoping for eight courts. Barb tells me, you know, if we get two, we should be thankful. We won't be. I mean, we will be, but we won't be. So in order to have tournaments and bring in people to stay here and enjoy Rattone, like the golf tournaments and the tennis tournaments of yore, we would hope at least for six courts and again, eight courts. And again, to picture that, on one of the sections of the tennis courts up at the high school, there's the north courts, two courts, and the south two courts. We could put at least four courts on each of those. So that's how you can kind of picture the thing. So I also included photographs of a pickleball court in Santa Fe and then the facility in Canyon City, a little bit of it that you can see, just to give you an idea. So I would ask if you would at least give us a little bit more time for JP to give you an idea about the costs. He's checked with BTU and also with a provider in Albuquerque who does these courts. We wanted a thorough presentation for you all, just so you know what we're looking at.
Sure.
JP?
Okay, guys, this will be brief because getting bids from contractors here in town is, it's not unheard of, but it's slow. So what we are going for is eight courts. And there are four courts, four courts divided by twenty-foot common area where picnic tables could be put, you know, people could put their lawn chairs, watch the games. And kind of came up with this from, Steph and I were in Havasu, in Lake Havasu City. And it's kind of the idea that they had to have common area in between courts so that people that are not playing could visit with each other, watch other players. Anyway, the dimensions of the four courts is sixty-four by one hundred and thirty-six. So that's divided into four. Obviously, you have two of those, and then you have the twenty-foot in between and also a ten-foot walkway on the outside. So it comes up to one hundred and sixty by one hundred and sixty. And given a six-inch pad from BTU, the bid, and it would all be dependent on pounds. So a thirty-five-hundred-pound concrete slab, obviously, it's only five dollars more per square yard than a three thousand. So the numbers that I came up with was only for the court and the court surface. The fencing, I do have all the numbers for the fencing, but I don't have bids from anyone for that. And I'm not sure if the city is having to get the grants, if bids have to come to you guys.
Probably.
Okay, anyway, so just a rough number. The surface, this is a company out of Albuquerque that does tennis courts, pickleball courts, basketball courts. That's all they do. They are three dollars a square foot. And it comes to seventeen thousand, four hundred and eight square feet. And the cost of that is fifty-two thousand, two hundred and some change. Of course, that's without tax. But that includes them making the trip from Albuquerque and doing the install. And actually, the owner of the company will come out because there has to be a one percent grade on the court for drainage in order for him to warranty the surface. But he would come out, make sure the concrete contractor had everything to the specs so that he would give warranty on the court. Now, as far as the concrete goes, the concrete, it's sixty-eight thousand, sixty-nine thousand dollars. And that's just for the concrete. Of course, again, there's labor involved that waiting on for bids. So those are the two major, actually, there's four major dollar amounts there because of fencing around the courts. And then there's lighting for the courts if we decide to pursue lighting. And if we do go into tournaments, sometimes there's rain delay, sometimes there's other things that happen that would carry the tournament into needing lighting. things that happen that would carry the tournament into needing lighting. So those are more estimates that I'm trying to find, but of course, there's not anyone around here that does court lighting, so these estimates have to either come out of Albuquerque, Denver, a bigger city. So I'm waiting on those as well. The fencing, I have all the linear feet, posts and all, waiting for an estimate on that. But again, you know, like if everything has to come to you guys as far as estimate and a bid, but this does give you an idea of the cost of eight courts with a 20-foot common area and 10-foot on the outsides of as a walkways.
Thanks JP. Quick question on the court services, 522, does that include the installation or is that just?
No, that is installation.
That is installation.
He comes out, he will drive from Albuquerque with his crews, and they will surface the whole thing. Of course, now that dollar amount, I did not leave out the, actually, it's 40-foot by 136-foot of common area. I just went ahead and put that in as a surface, which that could stay concrete. It doesn't have to have the special surface on that. Thank you, guys.
Interestingly enough, before the pandemic hit, Scott and I had a conversation about pickleball because me being with senior centers, it was the big rage. It started back east, and it was working this way. And we actually sat down and talked about, even talked about sites that we could renovate. And then COVID hit, and it kind of got pushed away. But I I hear it from the seniors in Albuquerque and the senior meetings, it's not just a senior sport anymore. It's growing like crazy, and I I think it's something that would go over really well. And it sounds like I'm impressed with 60 to 70 players already. I mean, that's that's amazing. And to be quite honest, the price for the surface didn't shock me. It sounded fairly reasonable. The concrete and installing the concrete, that's going to go up some, but it's it's not that far out of a realm of possibility.
One more thing to consider. You know, this is a growing sport, not just for us, but for young. When you watch the professional pickleball players, there's very few that are 40 and above. They're all younger. And I, you know, I watched fishing go from just a leisurely sport to a college sport to a high school sport that now gives scholarships to fish.
Yep.
I see pickleball going in the same direction.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, and as you all know, our budgeting cycle is coming up. We're going to start discussing things. We're going to have a public meeting. I encourage you to come, have your input, and see where we can go from there.
We're not going away, Mayor.
I understand.
We're not going away.
Leslie, you never go away.
No, I'm, no, that's right. And and I want to say too, Steve and Deidre are here. They moved from Oklahoma City. They come almost every day, and they saw it in Oklahoma City, then they saw us playing, and they came. We have a woman from Dallas, same thing. We, I mean, we have members that have seen it all over the place, and they've come here and and found a club and and joined us. And, you know, we we know it's the wave of the future, and we know it will bring people in. You all know from your surveys that recreation is always on the top, outdoor recreation is always on the top of your list. You also know that we're a retirement community, whether we want to be or not, we are. And and that's who's come and joined us, are people who have retired here and have now a social outlet that they didn't have before. And I I just urge you to, you know, Mayor, with your baseball, it's kind of like JP's. With your baseball background, you'd be killer, buddy, you know? Get out there and try so that you can tell the senior people.
It's been a dare, too.
Yeah, that's right, I know that. It was for JP, too. And but you can tell those seniors down there in Albuquerque, we've got it. We're on top of it in Raton, and that's what we're hoping that we've persuaded you. And I'm sorry we've taken so long on a long agenda. I thank you, and I thank you most of all for the use of the convention center because that has made us and allowed us to grow. And and with the high school in limbo a little bit, we have really appreciated it. So thank you.
Well, let me just add, you know, I, Leslie, I would sure take you up on cooperative effort on grant funding. I'd be interested in knowing what, you know, you've seen, what you've identified. There are a lot of funding opportunities out there right now. It's it's kind of grant funding season, and, you know, it is something that we've talked about for a couple of years. I think it's a it's a good idea, and we I would certainly work with you on submitting any kind of any kind of requests that you come across out there. I think there's lots of opportunities for funding those kind of things, and certainly if we can do that, I would encourage the commission to consider the matching funds. So we absolutely would commit to that.
All righty.
Thank you very much for your time.
You've got any other comments, questions?
Yes. I went, I have a question for you because I went up, I made me two ham sandwiches and cheese. I went up to see you guys. There wasn't a pickle in sight.
You want dill or mircus?
No, I I'm just teasing.
JP will get this one. Does Brett play, Brett Hiron?
We're trying. We're trying.
That's an old high school gym. I think it's a great program, I really do.
Well, you've seen us out there, and we're there seven days a week at the convention center if there's not anything there. And so if you're out and about in the morning, swing by, and we'll put a paddle in your hand.
All righty. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item D, deliberate and act on lodger's tax funding recommendations. We have three, the Dawson reunion, September 3rd and 4th, 2022. Oh, good catch. Okay, let's back up to item A.
Is it, and I, there may be other people here who are present who didn't get a chance to speak.
Do we have a, sorry. Okay, sorry, my bad. Thanks.
Mayor Commissioners, so it was brought to my attention over the last week that the VA office that's here, that where the vets can go get at the clinic, is slated to close. Is there anything that we can do or that y'all have done or anything? I'm sorry?
Lobby Congress just called.
We we did.
Did, have we, are we doing that?
We talked to them about that last week when we were there, and they, none of them are in favor of shutting any of them. I look for them to make an aggressive push soon, but like Mayor Protem said, write them, call them.
Yeah, we've started, we've already today started sending letters, but.
Don't just write ours. Go, you know, jump states.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know.
Okay, yeah.
All of them.
Because I I was told that there's like 700 vets that use this facility, and they pull from Colorado, from Walsenburg, and all over the place. I mean, that's a huge shoe.
Tragedy for those to.
Yes, that's.
The number we were given last week was 868 for Raton.
Wow. That's enormous. Okay, I just didn't know if it was like public knowledge or if you guys had heard about it or were doing anything.
Glad you're bringing it up.
Yeah, I think that's a very big thing. That's very important for our community and the people that have served our country. I know there's a couple here.
I'm up at Walsen like once a week, and I see those guys.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and this clinic needs to stay there.
Absolutely, yeah.
Needs to stay, as well as all the other rural clinics. They do not need to.
Mr. Berry and I had to talk about it on Sunday, and we're going to make a proclamation that'll be sent to them. I've called Heinrich and Ben Ray Luhon and Ledger, and and that's all you can do is to keep it in their thing.
Just keep.
We have a unique thing here that that not very many people know about. I'm going to go to the Vietnam era. Raton, Cofex County was the fourth highest per capita that served in Vietnam. And this this thing out here is rural enough. Now, Taos and and Santa Fe and Gallup, they can go to Albuquerque a lot easier than the ones from here. And we, like you said, we got, we pull them all the way from Pueblo all the way Texas and and then here they all come here.
Yeah, Clayton, Walsen, or Walsenburg, Wagon Mount, all over the place.
And I would like to see the entire community get on the phone and send letters and tell them.
I absolutely, who did you?
We need to keep this here.
Or maybe after the meeting or something, we can, I can find out who you talked to or exactly where to send letters to, and I'm going to just go around handing people. Here, this is the address you need to send the letter to. So if if you don't mind, if you could give me that information, I would be happy to.
I might have it with me. I know I gave Scott, he made some copies of some cards.
What we'll do, and and we did this back in the discussion of Amtrak days, and, you know, that was a good example of a grassroots effort that that completely changed the outlook, and that was successful. But I will find contact information for all of the federal delegation of New Mexico. And then, as Mayor Protem said, we're not limited to writing to contacting New Mexico delegation, but I will find the New Mexico delegation. Jesse, I'll get that to you, but we'll share it with the the local media here, try to get it out there where people can can find that contact easily. If they if they get a lot of contact from from local people, that's meaningful. If they get a letter from the city manager, it's easy to overlook that, but an outcry from the community will make a difference in this in this issue.
Yeah, if you could just give me that information, I'll help distribute it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for catching that. Yeah. All right, let's go to item A then. Deliberate and act on approval of minutes for regular meeting held March 8, 2022. Should have had a copy and a chance to go over them. I didn't find anything wrong with them.
I make a motion to accept as represented.
A motion and a second to adopt the minutes for the regular meeting held March 8, 2022. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now let's try item D. Deliberate and act on lodger's tax funding recommendations. As I said, we have three of them, Dawson reunion, September 3rd and 4th, 2022, the Raton Supercross event coming up May 21st, 2022, and the World Journal Summer Guide. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Commissioner, in your packet, you have a recommendation summarizing the recommendations of the lodger's tax advisory board. You also have the backup information in your packet on all three of these. I think there are a number of people in the room that attended the lodger's tax board meeting. I was not there, but I will read the recommendations to you. Lodger's Tax Advisory Board met on March 16th, 2022. They have forwarded the forward recommendations to the commission. Lodger's Tax Advisory Board is recommending that $12,578 be allocated to the Dawson, New Mexico Association for the Dawson picnic reunion. That would come from the contingency fund line item. Mayor Protem did make a comment on Dawson picnic reunion earlier. Second recommendation is that $2,200 be allocated to the Center for Community Innovation for the advertisement of the Raton Supercross, and that would come from the annual events line item. And then third, there is a recommendation to the commission that $1,200 be awarded to the World Journal Summer Guide for a full-page ad designed by the Center for Community Innovation Director Patricia Duran. That would be from the print advertisement line item. That's the summary. Mayor?
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments or anyone here to address this over this?
I might comment that the advisory board did, you know, discuss with each of the groups that they find a way to bring in a little revenue on top of what we give them, like sewing t-shirts or whatever. So and each group did agree that that might be a good idea, right, to do their best.
Okay, yeah, I was just, I guess, one of my questions, do a lot of these costs, do they fit the lodger's?
That was my question as well.
Tax board guidelines. We've had this question before over events like golf tournaments and that. In particular, and I'm not against the Dawson picnic. My mom grew up in Dawson, but does a lot of the costs or do they follow in the guidelines?
Mr. Mayor had the same concern when I was looking at it, just how delineated and the concern, not, I mean, I absolutely want to pick and cap it.
Absolutely.
We should definitely support it, but also just how much are they bringing to the table? It says that they do accept donations, you know, do they have any seed money from other donations? Because usually entities show us exactly what they're putting in the pot, but like I didn't think we could pay for food. I thought that was one thing that was a no-no. I thought, if this doesn't have it on here, it's not, it doesn't even apply, but prize money was another no. I can't remember the different things that in general tried to avoid.
What what came to my attention was the 8,000 for shirts. I know the golf club wanted to buy shirts for their tournament one year, and we did not allow that.
Seemed like legitimate questions, Mayor. I would recommend to the commission that we try to get all the questions from the commission answered. Those questions maybe come back at the at the next meeting with some response to issues that you've raised or questions that you have, but they seem like legitimate points.
Well, one thing that was said about the t-shirts was that they were just required to put the www/exploreratone on it because it is advertising.
Yeah.
I think that's how they've done it in the past. That's how they've done it in the past for different events, as long as they have the explore Ratone website, that they were considered marketing.
Marketing, okay.
Yeah. And so I was, I was thinking, you know, like, I think I figured it was like $20 a shirt, you know? The t-shirts are pretty expensive. It depends on what they're doing front and back. I don't know what their plan is, but.
I was just concerned I had, you know, we've had this come up in the past. If that is, if it's as simple as that, just putting www/exploreratone, I'm all for it.
That's what had been required in the past, and they they are continuing to do that.
Okay. Let's make sure they know.
That was discussed.
Okay, all right. Cool, right on. All right, that's all I have. I mean, we can come back to this one after we get some clarification, or we can go ahead and I'll entertain a motion however you guys want to do it tonight.
And I, you know, as far as the donations they get, they have not been very, it didn't sound like in the past they've been very organized about that and just kind of put out like a tip jar at the picnic and would, you know, raise a little bit of money. But they talked about how different ways they could get a lot more organized in in collecting donations and eventually become more or less self-sustaining.
Okay.
Yeah, the only things that stood out to me, as long as they're putting explore Ratone shirts with the meals, like I didn't, I wasn't sure if you could do according to the lodger tax.
For the picnic, I think people.
This is meals for special guests, $200.
It's for the special guests.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know if that changes it.
Doris Borata and Rick Landers is a, maybe you can help me out. He's, I think he wrote an article and did some research on the 1913 explosion that killed 236 migrants.
I believe it was music, wasn't it? He wrote some songs, and he was going to perform.
Yeah. So those are the two special guests they're feeding.
Well, what I would, I would suggest, perhaps maybe on the Dawson reunion, let's postpone that one until the next meeting, until we can get a little more clarification, just to make sure we're doing it. We just got a clean audit. We don't need to muddle up the audit for next year. So why don't we, I could make the motion myself if you you wanted, or if somebody would like to make the motion.
I'll make a motion to postpone the Dawson reunion recommendation and approve the Ratone Supercross and the World Journal Summer Guide, lodger's tax second hand.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone Dawson reunion until our next meeting and to approve the Ratone Supercross event and the World Journal Summer Guide. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And if that'll work, we can kind of clear that up and.
We will try to bring some information back to you all. And so I've got a question on the t-shirts and the food, and was there something else that you wanted to look into?
I think that was it, wasn't it?
That's pretty much it.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get some clarification.
Once they stated the Explore Ratone, I kind of seem to remember that in the past. Let's, let's just make sure we're, we're good. Yeah, let's make sure we're good.
I'll get you a report, Commissioner.
Thank you. All right, item E, Delivering Act on Park Hill Proposal for 2022 Monitoring and Reporting. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet, you have a written proposal from the firm Park Hill. Park Hill is a professional services firm that Raton has used for many years. Formerly Gordon Environmental, formerly Park Hill Smith and Cooper, ESC, now Park Hill. We use this firm, and you see that the proposal is for environmental monitoring and reporting services. We use this for sampling, testing, monitoring and reporting of groundwater wells that exist in the vicinity of the Armstrong Lane landfill. So the test there is required by the New Mexico Environment Department. We would anticipate, we'll continue to do this testing for about the next 25 years. It's an expensive thing that we do a couple of times a year. This firm performs those services and then submits a report on the City of Raton behalf to the Environment Department. And we're looking for potential impacts to groundwater from the landfill. Now, the landfill on Armstrong Lane was closed in 2014. We subsequently got a certificate of closure from the ED. And there is a long period where you would monitor for two things. You monitor the quality of groundwater, and then you would monitor to see if the landfill is generating methane. And we do that under a separate action. We, we generally have pretty poor quality groundwater, but not because of an impact from the landfill. So over the years that we've monitored groundwater, and that was during the operational phase of the landfill as well, we have not seen any impacts to groundwater. However, there are lots of constituents that we do test for, and so it is an expensive test. So you have the proposal in your packet for ongoing services from Park Hill. I will read the fee, that's what we're interested in. We propose to complete the project for a lump sum fee of $28,990 excluding New Mexico GRT with monthly invoicing. And then they break down those services. I would say that this is the same fee we have paid in the last year, and the fee is not, the proposal has not increased. One of the few things that we have seen this year that hasn't gone up in price. I want to answer any questions that you might have.
I just noticed on the, the back page they threw in the extra $10 to make it $29,000.
Okay.
I was gonna add that too.
Bumped it up a little.
They bumped it up $10.
Yeah, that's.
I'll make a motion to approve Park Hill Proposal for 2022 Monitoring and Reporting. We have a motion and a second to approve the proposal for the 2022 monitoring and reporting contract. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, Delivering Act on Resolution 2022-14, authorizing the City of Raton to utilize the Houston Galveston Area Council HGAC contract for the purchase of one ladder truck contingent upon NMFA Board of Finance Loan Approval. Item F and G are kind of together, aren't they?
They are, they're very similar issues where we are seeking the financing for two major pieces of equipment for our fire department. We do have Chief Burke present. And also, I would call on the City Clerk, Michael Ann Antinucci, in regard to the action contemplated here with these resolutions. Michael Ann?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So in your packet this evening, we do have two similar resolutions. The first one would be for the purchase of the ladder truck. And so you'll recall that we recently did submit a application to the New Mexico Finance Authority. We also have capital outlay funding and the amount of $1,100,000 that'll be dedicated towards that purchase as well. And then the balance would be financed with the loan proceeds. And then on the other truck, the Type 1 pumper engine that we're going to also purchase, we would have to utilize the loan funds and some of our fire funds to make up the difference for that purchase. We are requesting your approval to use the Houston-Galveston Area Council Contract, also referred to as HGAC. We're a member of this entity, and they kind of specialize in the high-end emergency management equipment. And so we more recently purchased an ambulance, which we have not received yet, but it was through this contract as well. So the total purchase price, and I've attached a copy of the most recent quote that the fire chief provided to me. The company is Sidson Martin Emergency Group. And so you'll see the total purchase price is $1,338,780.
And Mayor and Commissioner, if I could add what you would be agreeing to in your consideration of Resolution 2021-14, would be committing future fire fund distributions to this debt service. That will also apply on the next item as well.
Ready? Questions or comments? I noticed.
I also just wanted to mention that the New Mexico Finance Authority will meet on Thursday. And so our application is going to their board. So this approval this evening is also contingent upon getting that approval on Thursday, so.
And Mayor, I just, not to interrupt you, I don't get a question, but the Resolution Number 2021-14, is that what you want to go with? Or is it 20?
22.
Oh.
22-14.
That's a good catch. I guess, gosh, are all of them misinterpreted. So, so both of these, this one would be 2022-14, and then the next one would be 2022-15.
You have them right in the agenda, just.
No, that's a good catch, thank you. I'll get that corrected before it gets signed.
Delivery on these are 24 months, right?
That's what I was gonna say, yeah.
Okay, so. Make them.
Couple of years out. Are, are they gonna be new when we get them in 24 months? Or are they gonna be this year and we get them in 24 months?
So, to ask that question. It actually is going to be put in production line, and when they can get it fulfilled.
Okay.
There's no guarantee. I called the vendor this evening before the meeting to make sure everything was still set in place before we brought this to you. And everything still, as soon as they get it, they put it in line.
Okay.
It's the same with, he probably kept the mayor apprised of the ambulance, it's the same thing. But they are looking more or better than 24 months. And what's going on globally right now is really not helping situations because they're a large producer of what we acquire in the nation.
Right.
So, but when we do take delivery, it is, it's taken delivery completely ready to go minus equipment has to be put on.
Okay, sounds good. Any other comments, questions for Chief, Michael Ann, or Mr. Berry?
So the quote in your packet is good through March 31st. So as the chief said, you know, we would like to lock in this pricing. We did receive quotes several months ago, and after those expired, and we received these, the combined price of the two went up $140,000. And that wasn't a change in spec. And they also extended the delivery times to 22 to 23 months.
Okay.
So.
In other words, we need to act.
Can we approve these both at one time?
I think we could do that, yes, since we've discussed them both.
And as a, as the city manager said, with both of these, since portion of the purchase is going to be financed through the Finance Authority, we are pledging fire funds towards the repayment of that debt.
All right, Mr. Travis. Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-15 and 2022-14.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolutions 2022-14 and 2022-15. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, Delivering Act on Alpha Design Proposal for ride architectural services for proposed replacement of Raton Convention Center doors. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, this is a Lodger's Tax related issue as well. And as you know, a portion of Lodger's Tax is dedicated to promotional activities. And I think generally that's what we had talked about with the recommendations from the Advisory Board. But also, a portion can be dedicated to non-promotional issues. And a lot of times, those are structures or facilities that are related to tourism. And so where Raton has applied Lodger's Tax, non-promotional Lodger's Tax in the past would be to construction of the visitor center, was financed under a 20-year issue and paid for with Lodger's Tax. Certainly the convention center, the art gallery, the Schuler Theater. And then we would consider the Railroad Depot in the future as maybe a funding that would be directed towards that facility. Things that, as we talked about, the qualifications for Lodger's Tax puts heads in beds. It fills up our motels and our restaurants and strengthens our tourism position. Right now, currently, we do not have any debt service associated with non-promotional Lodger's Tax. And that would be something that we can talk about during our budget planning session. And what we have done in the couple of years that we have not serviced any debt is try to pick off smaller projects on a cash basis. You'll recall that some time back, we did improvements of the boiler and HVAC system at the convention center. We have talked about improvements at the visitor center. And I think there's, there's plenty of things we can do with those facilities that we talked about. One thing that we experienced during the watershed and dam owners' conferences, we have a lot of problems with the convention center doors. Convention center was rehabilitated in the 1980s to use as a convention center. Those doors and a lot of the components with the convention center are now more than 30 years old and really closer to 40 years old. And the problem that we have is really with the hardware and the access. We've also had a problem with our codes kind of floating around and unauthorized people getting access to the convention center. And then some vandalism, some damage occurring. What we're proposing under this project would be to replace the doors with some modern doors that really are worthy of our convention center, and also a security system that goes with the doors. It might be a system where we issue a card for someone to swipe, or it could be where we could control that code, and we change it from event to event. But it also would record data about when the building is accessed, so we would have that. I have asked for a proposal from Alpha Design for professional services. They will bring in some consultants that have experience in some of the, some of the technology we're talking about. And Alpha Design has proposed to do the project for a fee of $6,800 plus tax. That is for the professional services only. I would tell the Commission that in your consideration of this, we would have the, the construction part as well. And I would anticipate that that will exceed $50,000. Now, we are very well-funded on the Lodger's Tax Fund. I think the only commitment we're talking about, I have asked the Commission to consider $25,000 for improvement visitor center. And, and one aspect of Lodger's Tax is you, you can't accrue it for a long period of time. You do have an obligation to expend the funds within a certain time of collecting them, I think it's two years. So we, we do have quite a few funds accrued that you will see from our financial report. So I bring this to you for your consideration. But in full disclosure, this would be over $50,000 for this project.
All righty, any questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
I'll make a motion to approve the Alpha Design Proposal to provide architectural services for the proposed replacement of the Raton Convention Center doors.
A motion and a second to approve the proposal. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item A, Delivering Act on Juvenile Justice Grant Budget Adjustment Request. Am I? I'm guessing you hear the one on this one?
Mayor and Commissioner, at a recent meeting, we did bring to you budget adjustment number one for our juvenile justice grant. We are requesting a second budget adjustment to move the $500 of travel monies into the youth subcommittee. And that's just because due to COVID, they're really just attending all of their meetings in Zoom probably for the remainder of this fiscal year, so there won't be any travel monies. And so our ultimate goal is always to fully expend the grant. And so I think the last couple of years, we've kind of had a reversion of a small amount of funds in that travel line item. And so if we could move the $500 to the youth subcommittee, we have youth board members that would receive a $25 stipend for every meeting they attend. That is the continuum advisory board meetings. And then every, I guess there's another, every two weeks schedule for another youth board meeting, so they could get up to $50 for attending both of those meetings. So we're pretty confident, our coordinator, Danielle Vanderpoel, coordinates these meetings with the students. And we're pretty confident that we could fully expend those funds before the end of June 30th with this budget adjustment.
Any questions?
Nope. I'll approve the juvenile justice grant budget adjustment. A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the JGA budget adjustment. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, Overview and Discussion of Fiscal Year 23 Budget Preparation and Submission Guidelines. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, we are at the beginning of budget season. Just, you know, broad statement here, we would start in the new budget season on July 1st. There are a number of things that we would have to do. And of course, in our preparation of the budget, we have to report that to Department of Finance Administration, and they hopefully look over our shoulder and make sure we're doing that right. Michael Ann has a report for you with more detail. And in your packet, you do have a memorandum from the Director of the Local Government Division, Donnie Quintana. And generally in that, they give us guidance on what they would look for in their review of our budget. We would have two reviews, actually, a preliminary budget or an interim budget or initial budget report, and then a final budget. So we'll work on this between now and July to meet the requirements that you see. But I'd like to call on, no longer the city clerk, now the city finance director, Michael Ann.
Mayor and Commissioners, so looking at the memo that we just recently received from DFA, this is pretty standard. It gives us the guidance that we'll follow in developing the FY '23 budget, which we're gonna start that process here. going to start that process here pretty soon. That process will include several public hearings and also meetings with our department heads, and then the meeting that we'll be scheduling with the commission as kind of a workshop. So you'll see that the deadlines have not changed. June 1st is the deadline for the interim submissions, so we would bring a final draft budget to you at the second meeting in May for approval, and then I would have till June 1st to submit that to Department of Finance. We typically do do the budget resolution. It is optional with the submission of the interim, but it is a requirement when we do submit the final in July. So generally, what will happen is we'll close out the fiscal year June 30, and then once we've closed everything out and calculated those ending cash balances, those roll forward, and then we'll do the final budget based on actual ending cash. And then we will have till July 31st to submit that final budget. So the second meeting in July, we would bring the final budget to you for approval. So that would give us an opportunity, if we had to make changes between the interim and the final, we could, we could do that. And so I think, you know, this year, as we've talked about inflation and some of the price increases that we're seeing, it's going to probably be difficult to really, I think, come up with some good budget projections on the revenue side, and then, of course, our expenses. So we're seeing that right now with fuel, just one of the many, many costs that seems to be going up. So we're going to kind of try to build in some of these inflationary costs into this budget coming up this next fiscal year, just in anticipation of what we're seeing right now. I know a couple of years ago, when COVID hit, you know, trying to predict on the revenue side was very difficult. So we are seeing, and you'll see in our report on the financials this evening, revenues have been very strong, and so that's good. But also, if we start to see expenses exceeding what we budgeted, then we may see some additional budget adjustments between now and June 30. Other than that, like I said, everything's pretty much stayed the same as far as DFA's requirements. We still are required to maintain a 1/12 reserve, and, you know, they do provide some cautionary language in here, I think, where did I say that? Probably at the top of the second page, you know, they always kind of put that cautionary language in there about maybe hiring freezes, not filling vacant positions. Every community's situation is going to be different, so, you know, those are things that certainly, if the economy turned bad, we could look at implementing some of those practices. Other than that, is there any questions? They did put some information on the last page with respect to law enforcement protection funds. We are required to get an approval letter for the final budget if we're going to be carrying over any balances. So I'll work with the chief, and we can probably fully expend those by June 30. And then we will see in the new budget year, the changes that were adopted in the prior year legislative session, there will be some increases to the law enforcement protection fund, so the allocation will be a lot higher, and that's something we'll incorporate into the FY '23 budget. Is there any questions?
Questions or comments?
I think, Mayor, I'd just make the comment that, you know, we seem to have an early start on the budget discussion with the Michael Ball group here tonight. We would certainly encourage, you know, the public to comment on the budget where they think the city should put some resources. We will schedule public hearings and hold those during commission meetings. I have recommended to the commission that we have a workshop type of discussion as well, outside of a regular business meeting, and in talking to folks about when that might work, I would suggest a Saturday, April 30th. I would suggest that we would meet at the Armory at Raton Airport, set up a conference room there, meet in the morning, and maybe run, plan on running through to early afternoon. So if April 30th looks okay to commissioners, I'll go ahead and work on that plan. That is a Saturday. We can just throw it out there as a suggestion. We can do anything you want to do. I think that because some of the factors that Michael Ann had mentioned, it's a little different year for budget considerations, I think there's a little more long-term planning that goes into this as well, I am suggesting that workshop type of meeting. Been a few years since we've done that.
Yep.
Then I did have one other thing. Before the meeting, I printed out another memo that we got from DFA earlier in the year. I was thinking that the memo we put in your packet addressed the requirement that we have to adopt the resolution, which is the acceptance and approval of the audits, because normally they include that language in this memo. But right before the meeting, I printed another memo that they had given to us a couple months ago, and as I was sitting here this evening, I was reading that section, and they actually changed the wording in that section. And so the resolution that we provided to you this evening for adoption, that was like a standard boilerplate that they probably gave to us four or five years ago, and so we've continued to reuse that resolution. But as I was reading, they actually highlighted that section in the memo that I printed this evening. They changed the language, and so I don't know if I could request that maybe we revisit the item from earlier in the agenda and make a change in a couple of spots on the language of the resolution. And the reason I'm asking is they actually put in there that pursuant to Section 6-6, 6-6-2L and the Office of the State Auditor requirements, the LGD requires a copy of the governing body's resolution, which we will send this to DFA, and it requires all of the commissioners to sign, acknowledging the fiscal year 2021 audit findings and accepting management's responses for correcting the findings. Please note, this action would be most appropriate to be taken at the presentation, which we did this evening, and the audit report is a public record, and the resolution should include acknowledgement, not acceptance of the audit report. So that was a new sentence that wasn't in the previous year's memo. So after reading that, I would like for us to make just a couple amendments in the Resolution 2022-13, if that would be possible.
I think we could probably accommodate that. Any questions regarding budget planning in that right at the moment? Okay. Then entertain a motion to go back and rescind the approval of Resolution Number 2022-
Dash 13.
Dash 13, and then make a new motion to adopt the resolution with the new verbiage.
The change that I would propose is to eliminate the language that says acceptance and approval, and we would change that to acknowledgement. And then in the very last paragraph where it says, "The Raton City Commission does hereby," instead of accept and approve, it could say, "Acknowledge the audit findings and acceptance or accept management's responses for correcting the findings." And then that would be kind of verbatim what they put in their memo. So I apologize, I did not catch that before I drafted the resolution, but that was kind of a boilerplate that they've provided to us in the past, and so.
So can we do it with one motion? Can I move that we go back to Resolution Number 22-13 and amend it?
I think we need to rescind it first, now since we adopted it.
Okay.
I think that would probably be cleaner if you go ahead.
So let's make a motion to rescind.
Rescind, all right.
I don't think we've ever had this situation before, but I'd rather catch it now than send it to them and say, hey, you didn't, you didn't follow the instructions.
I make a motion that we rescind Resolution 22-13 that was adopted earlier this evening.
One second.
A motion and a second to rescind Resolution 22-13. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
And now I would entertain a new motion.
Okay. So I will move to change the language from acceptance to acknowledgement on Resolution Number 22-13.
With the addition of the language about, there's some other language that's in there.
Yeah, under the now therefore paragraph, we would say, "The Raton City Commission does hereby acknowledge the audit findings and accepts management's responses for correcting the findings."
So there's the two spots where you have to change the language.
Yeah, in the title, we would take out acceptance and approval and put acknowledgement.
And then three spots.
Yeah, there's that second to last, and then the last has acceptance again.
Where are we at here? Sorry.
The very last paragraph has accepted and approved this 22nd day of March.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we could change that as well. Do you see that, Desiree, where it says accept and approve this 22nd day of March?
Yeah, I'm moving on the wrong one.
Sorry to do that to you. A lot of motions and corrections.
Change the language to appropriately reflect that we acknowledge and not approve.
I did eliminate accept, to eliminate accept and approval, to acknowledge and accept in three spots, and then I can just go back.
Just acknowledge, we're taking out acceptance and approval.
Accept is not there.
Yeah.
Remove the word acceptance and replace with acknowledge or acknowledgement.
Okay.
And then add the additional language about management's findings.
Want me to read that again?
Acceptance. And then just at the end.
Where it says now therefore.
Okay.
So where it says, "City Commission does hereby."
Can we make this real simple and say, make a motion to amend the resolution to agree with the verbiage passed down by DFA?
That's what you have.
Yes.
Do that, okay.
Okay.
Perfect, that's my motion there.
Oh, that'll work. That'll.
And then I'll, I'll get this corrected, and then maybe when you take your break before the closed session, I'll, I'll get you to sign it.
All righty. So I have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to change the verbiage to match what DFA has advised.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All righty.
Okay. Sorry.
That's all right.
That's okay.
All right. To deliberate and act on Resolution 22, 2022-16, approval of February 2022 financial reports. Michael Ann, I guess you're still there.
Mayor and Commissioner, we do have in your packet this evening the financial reports that have been reconciled through February 28th. You'll see that our available cash in the general fund is $2,641,733.33. I've also given you a list of the ending cash balance in the various other funds. We did receive our March gross receipts tax distribution last week, and this distribution reflects our January business activity, and you will see that with the collection of the March tax, we're 13.18% above our year-to-date budget projection. So, you know, our budget projection was very conservative this year, considering that we were still kind of coming out of the COVID. So, and we also discussed at the last meeting that we thought that the February distribution probably reflected very strong online sales for Christmas. So you'll see that we've also seen an increase mainly also to construction projects, opening up of the economy due to the declining of the COVID cases, and we are cautiously optimistic, given the price escalations with recurring expenses for utilities, fuel. We're also seeing some price escalations in pool chemicals, which is a very large budget for the operation of the pool. We are also seeing an increase in bid prices on various projects, including equipment and vehicle purchases, like we discussed this evening on the purchases for the fire department, and also the supply chain issues that have increased delivery times as well. So I think it's probably going to get worse before it gets better, so those are some of the things we're going to take into consideration with our new budget coming up, and then trying to close out this fiscal year. So I put a note there that the next few months will be particularly challenging as we try to close out this fiscal year and develop expense projections for the new fiscal year budget. I did put the lodger's tax comparison chart in your packet, and so lodger's tax revenues have been very strong. We've, this chart reflects the collections through the end of February. You'll see that we're just shy of $400,000, and that's before the end of the third quarter. So I think that our projection in lodger's tax will easily probably come in about $460, $480,000, which is higher than any of the previous four years, depending on what gas prices do. I don't know. There's a lot of traffic out there right now for spring break, but if the prices get too high, we might kind of start to see a decline in travel. We also have our gas tax comparison report in your packet. That also, too, remains fairly strong. We rely on those revenues, as the city managers reported, to kind of leverage with our other street projects for matching funds. We'll be talking about that during our budget session as well, because we've, with a lot of the projects that we've been awarded, we've committed a lot of those funds even though we haven't started the projects. So we'll have to kind of continue to be cognizant of what the commitments are that we've made thus far. I did want to bring to your attention, I just received from New Mexico Tax and Revenue, our enactment table that we have to approve. This would be the new rates, gross receipts tax rates going into effect July 1. You'll see, as a result of the legislation that passed, that decreases the state increment 0.125%, that will thus decrease the city's overall rate to 8.3833%. And so that will be the tax rate that goes into effect July 1. We'll try to get some public service announcements out there. We'll work with the radio and probably put something in the World Journal as well, but I did want to bring that to everyone's attention. And then as far as the financial report itself, just wanted to mention, you'll see under our capital projects, under the Fund 311 and the 313 sanitation project, we did have a couple negative cash balances. The one for the Cimarron project, we issued the check and then had to submit to the New Mexico Finance Authority for reimbursement, so we held the check until we drew down the loan funds, and then we sent the check to the vendor. So just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention. And then on the sanitation project, we did make a transfer out of our sanitation fund just so that we can kind of finish that project up as it's coming to an end here pretty soon. So other than that, everything else looked pretty good, and we're just kind of anticipating a lot of our construction projects starting up again, and we'll start to try to close out some of the existing. and we'll start to try to close out some of the existing grants that we have and close them out before June thirty, if we can.
Alrighty, any questions for Michael Land or staff?
I just had a comment, I don't know, on the, after the gas tax, that next page where we look at the year, the comparisons it has, and I don't know if I just haven't been watching this closely, but I was pretty surprised to see your date marked on twenty, your date twenty-twenty-one, up fifty-three percent in gross receipts collected. Am I reading that little green in the paint correctly there?
Uh, I don't know, that doesn't really.
That seems kind of.
That seems kind of high. I don't know, I think I'm going to have to double check that. So when I go to reprint the resolution, I'll pull that Excel spreadsheet up and double check that.
It's going to be pretty close, though.
That does seem a little high. And then, when you look at this comparison, we have to keep in mind, you know, the two columns that we do have for the infrastructure tax and the environmental tax. You know, a couple of years ago, when the New Mexico Tax and Revenue kind of consolidated the increments, those two are kind of being phased out, because now we have this consolidation of the increments. And so here, probably mid-year, towards the end of the year, we may not even see those two categories showing up anymore. So with some of the changes they've made, it's going to make it a little bit harder to do the, you know, a true comparison. I think that in the past, and maybe during our workshop, we could look a little bit more, maybe at the industry classification report that would show the tax. So every month, in addition to our gross receipts tax report, we get one that breaks it down by industry. So you could kind of look at your construction sector, your retail sector, and that might be something that we want to look at a little bit closer. The unfortunate part is the online sales. I was really hoping that we would get a report that broke that out a little bit better.
It doesn't sound like we're going to get one anytime soon.
So, but yeah, let me check that percentage for you.
So I'll make a motion to the document, two twenty-two sixteen, our third financial report for fiscal year twenty-two.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution twenty-two-two dash sixteen. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, deliberate and act on Resolution twenty-two-two dash seventeen, budget adjustment number nine for fiscal year twenty-two. Michael Land.
Mayor and Commissioner, as we are close to closing out the end of the third quarter, we'll be submitting our third quarter report to DFA next month. I just wanted to do some line item adjustments, and also I need to include the small cities assistance. We did talk at the last meeting that we budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand, and our small cities assistance came in at three hundred and eighty-five-nine-eleven. So I need to put that into the budget. We're not, I am looking to use some of that monies to offset some of our vehicle expense for fuel. That's kind of the big unknown right now. And then we had a few other line item adjustments. I had some monies that I could move around, but you know, this was a pretty tight budget this year. We really didn't budget much of a cushion, so I would ask that we be able to use about twenty-five thousand in those funds towards the various other line items that I have listed there for those departments. Also, the library did bring to my attention that the state library, we need to make a correction in her line item, because we do have to spend a certain amount per capita for the state library grant. They give us the grant, but then in the general fund, we would have to spend closer to ten thousand five hundred for the year per capita. Now, we think with the new census figures, that would be adjusted in next year's budget, but I think we prematurely had used the wrong census figures for this year's budget. Other than that, I am looking to have you approve temporary transfers for the senior center boiler expenses. That project has been completed, but the grant reimbursement is pending, so we would need to do a temporary transfer, and then once I receive those funds, I could move the monies back to the general fund. Other than that, we did do, I think on the previous budget adjustment, I had increased the utility line item for the aquatic center, but after getting the gas bill this past month, the adjustment that we made last month wasn't going to be enough. So I was looking to increase that line item again. But those are some of the things that we're going to have to look at real closely going into the next fiscal year budget, and probably look at a little bit of history for this year's utilities, because we are running a little high as far as the gas at the aquatic center. Other than that, we're just looking at lodgers tax promo and non-promo. We do have some monies in reserves. We talked about this at the lodgers tax board meeting. Because of COVID, we really didn't have any events, and so we kind of had a balance building up in our lodgers tax promo fund. So I am looking to increase their annual events line item and the contingency fund. We've seen a couple new requests this year that we haven't had in years past. The gentleman from Trinidad has a couple new events. He had the spaghetti western this past fall, and then he's doing another one in May that you recently approved. It was called the Bicycle Chief.
Yeah, Chief Comedy Tour.
Chief Comedy Tour. So anyway, that one's coming up in May. So we're kind of excited to see some new events, and then we'll have our traditional events run to Raton, the balloon rally, and also Gate City. So I would just request that we put some money in those line items as our lodgers tax board brings some additional recommendations to you before the end of the fiscal year. And then also just ongoing discussions with things at the Welcome Center, improvements that we're making there. I've incorporated what you just previously approved for the juvenile justice grant. We kind of have a separate process for CYFD to approve the form that you approved in your previous action, and then for DFA, I have to also include it in this budget adjustment. And then just some line item adjustments in our sanitation fund. We have seen some additional revenues that we collected in recycling revenue, and we would mainly be looking to do line item adjustments to increase our sanitation services, which would allow us to cover additional costs for our contract increase on a fuel adjustment. That's all I have for you this evening. Is there any questions?
Alrighty. Any questions, comments?
No, to approve budget FY twenty-two budget adjustment. Second.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-two-two seventeen, budget adjustment number nine. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item M, deliberate and act on funding request to utilize economic development funds for the Regional Economic Development Conference in Raton, May eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, in our economic development partnership meetings, we have discussed starting a regional economic development conference, and the thought about that would be, we would like to get our state delegation here. You know, we really, through the year, don't have much of an opportunity to see them. We really appreciate Representative Montoya coming to town and then sending his chief of staff to our recent meeting, but we'd like to see them face-to-face in town from time to time, but also people that may come from New Mexico Economic Development Department and also our federal delegation. And so we have proposed the Regional Economic Development Conference. We've tentatively talked about a date of May eleventh. That's a pretty short time to pull this together, and I would anticipate that we would get partnership from Grow Raton and Raton Main Street in helping to put this together, and I would anticipate that the funding request would come from those partners to the commission, from the Economic Development Fund for some of the expenses associated with this. I haven't really had a chance to formalize that with them, so I would recommend that we postpone until the next meeting, and we got some work cut out for us in pulling this off, the timeframe's getting a little short. We invited some people to it, but I really want to get a pretty robust conference going, and it's titled as regional, because I think other local governments in northeastern New Mexico have expressed the same thing. They feel kind of left out of the process when the legislature is going. You know, you can't really talk to your delegation at that time. You have to do it outside of the legislative session. We should have communicated everything to them that we want to communicate to them. This could potentially be of all time, too, but we're trying to pick a time of year that is, would allow good attendance by people in state government, the legislature, perhaps the administration, and our federal delegation, and then expand to people that are looking to invest in Raton as well. So that's what we're doing here. We're not, we don't have everything together yet to really ask of this request from the commission. We'll put it out there for you to think about, and we'll try to get organized for our next meeting, bring you a formal request through one of our community partners here, and see if we can pull this together, so.
Alrighty.
There you go, Mayor.
So we have a recommendation from Mr. Berry to postpone Item M until the next meeting.
So moved?
Second.
A motion and a second to postpone Item M to the next meeting in April. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? I just looked at the clock and realized it's a long night, so. Item N, city manager report. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, I just would briefly report to you on, as we talked about earlier in the program, it is grant application season, and I'll report to you on those activities. We did talk about applying for the cooperative agreement program, and we talked about a project that would resurface residential streets in the New Mexico Town Company Second Subdivision. I have completed that grant application, submitted it to New Mexico DOT. Also, to New Mexico DOT, we talked about the municipal arterial program. That has been submitted. We talked about reconstruction on Brilliant Kearney Avenue, also in residential area. So those things are done. We're working on, myself and Jason Phillips are working on an application to the Transportation Project Fund. This is a relatively new program through DOT. It's vetted by Northeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization, NERCPO. They will talk about it in their meeting tomorrow. You'll recall, last year, that was the, our requests were funded for the Frontage Road, one point six million dollars, and Sugar Great Avenue, one point two million dollars. So that's a, that's a large program for us, and we're putting together another relatively large request. We'll report back to the commission on that. Something I've worked on, I did receive acknowledgement on, an application I submitted is for the twenty-twenty-two Water Resources Development Act, WRDA. That is a federal program. Ours was one of five projects from the Third Congressional District that was moved to the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee of the U.S. House of Representatives. I did request one point two million dollars for improvements to our wastewater treatment plant, and so that's significant that it, that request would go to the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. I'll report back to you on that. I did submit an application for funding through the New Mexico Historical Records Advisory Board, I'll give this to you later, for document imaging and organization and storage. So we would, you know, a problem we've talked about before is, we store a lot of paper documents here, but we do realize that ultimately the answer to that would be scanning those in and storing them in a location where they're available for the long term, and they're not subject to rainwater, insects, or vermin. So I applied for that funding, and I'll report back to you on that one as we hear as well. And then lastly, I would state that we have gotten notice from our federal delegation regarding congressionally-directed spending requests. There are some requests that are open. We'll have to move pretty quickly on those. I would anticipate that we submit a congressionally-directed spending request, they don't like the term earmark, but that's the short term for these, to each of our U.S. senators and our representative in the U.S. House. And so what I would recommend to the commission, and we can formalize this, but I think because we were turned down for application to, for EDA funds for the Kearney School Film Project, and also I would report that in our discussion with Jennifer from Congresswoman Ledger Fernandez's office, we did say that that was very disappointing, and that's a project that's ready to go, and I think it's important to Raton. And I would ask the commission to focus on that particular project. Things we've talked about last year included Barton Mesa Ranch. We have put some funding together for that acquisition. I think that we'll find a path to complete that, and then also Lake Malloy Dam improvements. And, you know, we did talk to the governor about that when she was here. She did indicate that some of the BIL money may be available for that. So I would, I would suggest that we look at the Kearney School project for our earmark requests, and I would go forward with that, and then I would report back to the commission.
Sounds like plan.
So we did not get that one point one million, and I got that lake.
The one point one million is secured, is secured through the New Mexico Legislature in the form of capital outlay. We did apply for three million dollars through the U.S. EDA. That request was denied. So we're, we're hoping for funding through a federal source for that important project. That's all I have, Mayor.
Alrighty, thank you. This time I'd entertain a motion to go into closed executive session pursuant to Section Ten-Fifteen-One-H Two Personnel, City Manager.
So moved?
A motion and a second. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Here in closed session, we have a five-minute recess.
Does that not need a roll call?